Push 2018 to order, we have a forum and the agenda was properly posted?
Yes.
Okay, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the redeemed, just as for all.
Next item, item four is public appearances and this is public's opportunity to speak about any subject that is not a specific agenda item, anybody tonight?
We don't have anything.
Okay. Item five, discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting of May 21st. Any comments, corrections, additions?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve, there's second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes of the May 21st meeting as presented, any other discussion?
Is that one question, was Kyle Broom appointed on the fine commission at the last meeting or?
Uh, not at the last meeting, but he texted me about a day later and said he would take it, so I guess that means he is.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we'll have to make that official, I guess. All right, any other discussion or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Presentations to the board, we have a review of the 2017 audit with Amanda Blumberg of Baker Tilly.
Is this okay?
That's fine. If you need to put anything up on the TV, you just put it under that white thing on the other end of the table there.
Oh, okay.
And that's the camera that posts the TV, so.
Okay, well, I think everyone has the handout-
Yep.
-that I plan to go through, so I'll focus most of my time on this. Backing up, I'm Amanda Blumberg, I'm with Baker Tilly. I am in charge of the village's audit, so I do the final review on it. What I'll be doing today is talking through some of the high-level financial data, I know we have some new faces here, so I like to keep it pretty basic and kind of, this is what we think you need to know. But feel free to interrupt me with questions as we go along here, and I'll do my best to answer them. You received two documents, I think, in your packet, other than the graphs that we're going to go over, one is a financial statement, it's the larger document, about 64 pages long, it's a lot of information in here, we're gonna boil that down into the presentation that I, that you got as well today. The other document is the communication to those charged with governance and management, so this is an ancillary document along with the audit that talks about things like internal controls and recommendations and also a set of required communications is in here as well, I'll touch on this briefly at the end as well. So if you would look at the graph package that you have, which is, you know, the report to the village board dated today, I'll start there. And if you flip to page one, so the first thing I'm gonna talk about is the village's general fund. So the general fund is the main operating fund of the village, it has the bulk of the tax levy going there, your administration, public safety, public works, all of those types of costs are recorded here. It's a big focus because this, the health of the general fund is very indicative of the health of the village overall. So we focus on the fund balance of the general fund on page one. And the fund balance is essentially the equity, you know, whatever's left over when you take assets minus liabilities. Fund balance is broken down into a few different categories that you'll see here, there's a non-spendable, assigned, and unassigned category here. You'll see that non-spendable has about $80,000 in it, this is the fund balance that you can't just liquidate and use to pay bills with. So for example, long-term receivables will be in this non-spendable fund balance, 'cause we can't just collect on those in the short term and use them to pay our current bills. The majority of this balance is made up of prepaid items, so we've already paid cash for 2018 costs in 2017, so we obviously can't liquidate that, as well as an advance to TIF six, so that's a majority that makes up that balance. The assigned fund balance is designated for use in the future period, in this case, the water utility pays an annual amount to the general fund called the payment in lieu of tax, that is the entire amount that you see there, $318,000. So the reason it's assigned is it's meant to be used in the 2018 budget, so we just earmark it, say, well, we're gonna use it next year. The unassigned portion is just over a million dollars, and this is really the funds or the equity that is free and clear and available to be used for current bills. It's the largest part of this, as you, of the general fund's fund balance, as you can see, the total being just about 1.4 million with the unassigned being just over a million. Any questions on that? Page two talks a little bit more about the general fund balance and we talk a little bit about some ratios and benchmarks here. The unrestricted fund balance, so that's a different term, that's your assigned plus your unassigned, everything except non-spendable essentially. We compare that to the current year expenditures of the general fund to see, okay, how many, how long can we get through the year with the current reserves that we have? And so the ratio or the percentage there is about 34%, so that means we can get through about a third of the year with the reserves that we have on hand at year end. Just some benchmark information here, down in the chart, the blue line is the actual, so the percentage that it's been over the past five years, the red line is the recommended minimum by the Government Finance Officers Association, it's just a, they recommend a minimum of two months or about 17% to have on hand, this last year the village was double that. The village does have a fund balance policy as to where, you know, we want this number to be, and that is at the 20, I think the 20 to 30% range, so we have a line at 25% there to show about the average of what's acceptable. So in summary, the actual is above where, you know, we, above the benchmark recommended minimum as well as the village policy. And that's a good, you know, that's a positive thing, we, you know, want to have reserves on hand in case, you know, something comes up or, you know, we have to, you know, pay for an emergency of some sort. Any questions on fund balance? Okay. Page three and, pages three and four talk about the GO debt, so the general obligation debt is the debt that is secured by the tax levy, there are some benchmarks and statutory requirements here, but you'll see the information over the last five years and focusing on the 2017 column, there, we, we tell you how much GO debt is outstanding at the end of the year. The village had about $16.5 million outstanding and the utilities, being the water and sewer utility, also had a share of about 2.8 million outstanding. All in all, it's about $19 million of GO debt. Based on the statutory limitation, the village can have outstanding about $35.5 million. This is a, like I said, a statutory requirement that a municipality's debt can't exceed 5% of its equalized value, so that's what that number represents, is that 36 million is 5% of the village's equalized value. So we're just over half of that, so we have general obligation debt outstanding, that is just over half of the statutory limitation. There's a variety of opinions out there as far as where this number should land, what I can tell you is that 50% is a pretty healthy place to be, a lot of our clients that have active TIF districts have a higher number there, you know, a growing community where they're borrowing to, you know, make roads and developer incentives in their TIF districts, quieter communities tend to have a little bit lower percentages, you know, or a goal of a lower percentage. Now interestingly, when we talk about TIFs, the majority of the GO debt outstanding for the village is TIF-related, so about 12 million of that $16.5 million is actually TIF-related. What that means is that the TIFs are supposed to be generating their, the property taxes or the increment to repay that debt versus the village having to levy taxes to repay that. So that, that makes kind of the, the burden on the taxpayer a lot less than what this appears to be. The next page takes a look at the annual debt service payments and compares it to the village's expenditures, we do some adjustments to the expenditures to try to make them more comparable from year to year, capital outlay costs can vary greatly from year to year, so we back those out as well as refinance debt, which can also, you know, make your expenditures inflated in any given year. So the total principal and interest paid in 2017 was about 1.5 million, again, about a 1.3 million of that, I believe, was TIF-related or was scheduled to be TIF-related, that number might be a little bit different, but the point being that the majority of that, again, is paid by the TIFs. When we compare that to about $6 million in expenditures, that gives us about a 25% ratio. Again, some benchmark data, you know, we, bond rating agencies will say, you know, this number shouldn't, you know, prefer this number to be 20% or under, again, not a huge deal here just because of the amount of TIF debt that's out there and that the TIFs are, again, generating the money to repay that. Any questions on the GO debt? All right, the next few pages take the general fund and the debt service fund's revenues and expenditures and trends them out over the last five years and gives you some graphs to show, for comparison purposes. What we generally expect to see in municipalities is a, are pretty level lines from year to year, you know, you don't have a lot of ups and downs and then, for the most part, but we do have a couple here that I'll point out. If you see on the graph on the right, you'll see that the tax, the yellow line for tax revenue increased quite a bit in 2015, that was a concerted effort or a decision to increase the village's tax levy within its allowable limits, but to take advantage of what is available out there for the village, that's the reason for that increase. The next page takes those same revenues and puts it in a chart to show you, you know, what exactly makes up your revenues on an annual basis, and you'll see that about three quarters of your revenue for your general fund and debt service fund comes from the tax levy, so, you know, there's also small slivers coming from intergovernmental grants and aids and public charges for services, but the majority is the tax levy. Page seven and eight do the same thing with the expenditures for the general fund and debt service fund, you'll see some wacky-looking lines here just because of how the police department was set up in the past and how it is now, so back in 2015, we know that the police department became fully under the control of the village. In the past, the expenditures that were reported for the police, for the village's share of the police operations was on a different line, so that went, the yellow line went down one year and the red line went up, so those two kind of offset each other, but that's the reason for those goofy lines on those charts. In the end, it's a, you know, they would even out and probably increase a little bit if it had been together for all those years. Page eight then is the breakdown of all of the types of expenditures into a pie chart, public safety being the biggest chunk of this at about a third of the total, debt service close behind at 28%. So generally, we see public works and public safety and sometimes debt service being the biggest chunks of this. Any questions on that? I'm gonna jump into the utilities then, on the next couple of pages. Again, a lot of data on here, I'll try to point out what I think is important, but first we're gonna talk about water sold in the, for the water utility, so we know that the utilities are set up to kind of be self-supporting, you know, rates are charged to customers to be able to pay for operations, for improvements and current improvements in the form of debt and future improvements. So what we try to pay attention here is to, what is the operating income, are we cash-flowing, are we generating enough revenue to pay for our costs and for future improvements? So you'll see here where we have a breakdown of water sold by customer type, you know, this information is helpful to see how it's trending, what we've seen is that a lot of water conservation efforts happen, we don't expect water usage to slowly creep up like costs do on an annual basis, larger companies that may have bought a lot of water in the past are often doing, making improvements to their, you know, facilities so that they're not using as much, and so all of this kind of comes into play as we look and see how are we generating revenues for our utilities. So the operating revenues were about 1.25 million in 2017 with expenses being about $875,000, so that is a pretty big gap, a pretty healthy operating income, and you'll see the chart on the right shows where that income has been compared to the expenses, the blue over the red, that gap being the amount of operating income over the years. So again, we're looking to definitely be in that situation where we have an operating income. The next page then looks at that income in a little bit different way, according to the PSC, as you know, the water utility is regulated by the Public Service Commission, so the income, the operating income that the PSC interprets is a little bit different than accounting standards, and so we have that information here, but that's what figures into the rate of return that they calculate, and so you have an authorized rate of return of 5.5%, and so that's what you're allowed to, I guess, earn when it comes to the rates that you're charging. The blue line is where you've been over the past couple of years, and most of the time I don't see us getting all the way up to that rate of return, but we wanna be close to it, so we started up here, we took a little bit of a dip, and then with a rate increase, we're back up closer to that authorized rate, so that's a good, a positive trend. Page 11, it talks about the cash flow part of it, again, we wanna have cash on hand in order to pay for our operations, so this is what, this is really what we're looking at here, the, the minimum target that we wanna have on hand is about three months, and so in 2017, we had about $1.2 million of unrestricted funds on hand, which gives us almost a year's worth of cash to have on hand, and that, again, you know, far exceeds the, the minimum recommendation of three months. Down below, we do a comparison of the capital assets, which is essentially the utility plant, the infrastructure, the water mains, the, the wells and the, and the pumping and equipment and all of that, and we compare that to our investment in it, and it tells us how much we owe, own versus owe on that, so we own about 64% and we have debt out on about 36% of that, so that's what that ratio means. Again, getting to at least the 50% mark is, is a pretty good goal to have, and we've been over that for the past several years. Page 12 and 13 go over much of the same information for the sewer utility minus the PSC information, you'll see that the operating revenues are much closer to the operating expenses or may even be slightly under, so those two lines on that chart are much closer following each other, and that, you know, basically with the sewer utility, we're looking to cash flow, we wanna make sure that we have cash to pay the operations, there isn't a rate of, there isn't a rate of return for the sewer utility because it's not regulated, so again, being on the MMSD system, you're getting charged from them, you just pretty much have to make sure that you can keep up on your sewer main maintenance and making sure we're adding a plant when needed. Here, let's see, oh, just wanted to point out the amount of depreciation expense that's in the operating expense number, it's right around the $400,000 to $430,000 mark over the last five years, that's a non-cash expense, so when we're talking about cash flowing, you know, $400,000 of those expenses are not an actual cash expense, but we want to make sure that, you know, we're charging enough rates, enough in rates to recover the cost of our depreciation of our system, so with those lines being pretty close together, you're accomplishing that at this time. Page 13, again, talks about the cash available, again, the three-month minimum target, there's about $850,000 as of the end of 17 in the sewer utility, which gives us about seven and a half months, so over double of the recommended minimum. And then again, the information at the bottom about the percentage of the plant that is financed by earnings versus debt is about 62%. The last page talks about the TIF districts, and this is just, this is information that is pulled together, sort, the total sources of funds and uses of funds for each TIF district since they had started or since they were created. TIF five and seven are generating a nice increment, you, you know, are well aware that TIF six has its challenges, you know, and, and I think there are some plans in, in place to, to deal with that, but obviously that one just didn't take off like the other two did, and we'll, we'll see how that kind of pans out with the, I think you're talking about creation of some new overlying districts or something like that, so hopefully that will turn or help that situation out, but that's just a, information, again, since they were created so that you can just kind of see in a snapshot where they're, where each of them are at. All right, that's what I planned to go through as far as financial information, does anyone have any questions they'd like to go over?
Yeah, Amanda, thanks for the overview, it was very informative, going back to page one.
Mm-hmm.
So the 72% of unassigned under the general fund balance, is that typically the percentage that you, you see?
It's usually, it's usually the biggest, biggest piece of the total fund balance, I would say, you know, that's not a, a percentage that I pay a lot of attention to, but I would say it's usually well over 50%.
You mean in relation to other municipalities, I think, that's kind of normal?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty high.
Ours is pretty high?
Yep, yep.
I'm more concerned with the amount than the percentage.
Yeah, what's interesting about that is, you know, the percentage is one thing, and for smaller municipalities, you tend to wanna have that higher percentage because, you know, your annual operating costs are lower than that of a larger municipality, so a higher percentage is not that much in dollars as it may be for someone else.
Having a higher amount allows us to get a good bond rating.
Right. Yeah. Anything else?
All right, I just wanna touch briefly on the communication to those charged with governance and management, as I mentioned before, if you're really bored some night, this is a nice thing to read, but no, I do recommend you look through it at least, it does talk about internal controls, and what you'll see in here for the village is, you know, pretty common, we talk about internal controls and segregation of duties and, in a, in a environment such as a village, there's a pretty small staff, so it's not possible to always segregate all of the duties that are, you know, that would be done in, in a larger municipality. So many, many, many of our clients have these types of points in here, you'll see pages two and three, I believe, yep, there's internal control environment and internal control over financial reporting, so I just wanted to let you know that, you know, this is pretty common, doesn't mean that, you know, we don't care, it just means that there are certain things we can't achieve with the staff size that we have, so, you know, I would say that over the years, the village has taken a list of items we used to have on here and chopped away at them as they could, and so what's left here is really some of the things that we can't do a lot about, you know, there are definitely some compensating controls in place, and as well as the board's oversight is important in that process as well, to be reviewing the bills that are paid, you know, asking questions and, you know, just getting a, a high level of understanding of the, of the financial information. All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We're at item seven, unfinished business, and item A is discuss and consider the building inspector contract and ordinance revisions regarding the annual building inspector report. First, I guess we'll need a motion to take this off the table.
Jack, just, I'm anxious to get to this, but I was just wondering if you wanted to get Greg out of your, before that, so.
Yeah, if that's okay with everybody?
Item A.
Okay. All right, great.
I said you whine otherwise, so I was.
Good evening, board members, good evening, Lee. You'll have, see a copy of our sale day report that summarizes the bond sale results that were conducted earlier this morning, just as a quick refresher, last month, the village board authorized a sale of these bonds to finance sewer improvements, that consists of the Main Street lift station and the Progress Drive force main, a portion of both of those projects is being paid by TID district number seven, and the balance of the debt service will be assigned to the village's sewer utility. On page one of the sale day report is kind of an executive summary of the bond sale, we received a total of three bids, the winning bid was submitted by Baird, and they were actually the lead underwriter on a very large, what's called syndicate bid, which means several other underwriters partnered with Baird, so we'll see that on the bid tab in a moment, but the true interest cost percentage came in at 3.0424%, the total net principal and interest over the life of the bonds came in $117,814 less than the estimate that we provided you last month. Also, I'll briefly walk through the attachments that are included in the sale day report, after the executive summary is the bid tabulation, which includes the rates that were submitted by all three underwriters, you'll see on the first page all those syndicate members that were included within the winning bid submitted by Baird. So on page three, after the bid tabulation, page number is in the lower right-hand corner, this is just the summary of the financing plan, comparison to what you authorized last month to the final results today, you'll see the project costs at the top, which are really unchanged, the portions for Main Street, Progress Drive, and we show how much is attributable to TID seven and then the overall utility. Last month, you'd authorized the bonds the amount of $2,455,000, we had issuance costs come in less, and so the actual amount that you'll be considering this evening is $2,415,000, so you're authorizing $40,000 less in bonds, but still having the same amount that you need to finance your project costs, so that's to your benefit as well. The debt service allocation is summarized on page four, this just breaks down the debt service for the bond issue, the portion of each project that's attributable to TID seven, the portion that's attributable to the sewer utility, you'll see then on the far right-hand side down the lower right-hand corner, again, the total debt service came in about $117,800 less than what we have estimated. total debt service came in about $117,800 less than what we estimated last month. The next item I wanted to direct your attention to is really the cash flow projection for TID 7. That's on page six. Since, again, a portion of this debt will be assigned to the TIF district, this is the cash flow projections, starting with, you know, your fund balance as of 2017 and then projecting future increment revenue within the district and then your expenditures, which consists of some existing debt from your 2012, 2017 issues, the debt service for these bonds that you're considering this evening. There are some municipal revenue obligation payments or debt service incentive payments. We've projected those going forward. And then there's some other general capital and administrative costs that are assigned to that TIF district. So based off of kind of development that's anticipated within the district that we know about presently and all of your existing expenditures, we're projecting that TID 7 would close in year 2023, which is two years ahead of its maximum life. As the village has done for the past several years, you've been in the bond market, you did obtain a rating from Standard and Coors. A copy of the rating report is included at the back of our report. Just a couple of items I want to draw your attention to. The report is largely favorable. There are several things that S&amp;P called out in the village's favor. One is just generally strong management practices. You have several financial policies in place that you're adhering to or exceeding based on their review of those policies. You've had strong budgetary performance through the last fiscal year with a slight operating surplus in your general fund and then your other governmental operating funds as well. As was mentioned in your summary of your audit, you have very strong liquidity. At the end of fiscal year, your fund balance is about 34% of operating expenditures. And then also in the report, they made particular mention of the long-range financial planning that the village started in 2016, where we do kind of a five-year forecast of all your operating and capital needs. They reference that as really, you know, adhering to very strong management and strong budgetary and fiscal planning. So I encourage you to read that over. It's kind of a nice independent assessment of your overall financial condition. Your rating is AA, stable, which is very strong. Certainly, as Matt mentioned earlier, you know, benefits in the market in terms of you receiving more favorable rates. So the final action before you this evening, you had a draft of the resolution that was submitted. As I mentioned, the final amount has been reduced down to $2,415,000. You approved the resolution. I'll have a bid form that'll be signed by the village president and village clerk this evening, just evidencing your approval of the bond sale. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Back up here, I guess, I should probably do item 8A then, which is the bonds. Item 8A is discuss and consider resolution 2018-10, resolution awarding the sale of $2,455,000, general obligation sewerage bond, series 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Do we have to amend that amount?
We should get a second first.
Okay. We got second. And what about, amend the dollar amount?
It should be $2,415,000.
$2,415,000, okay. Motion in second.
I'll second then.
Okay. With that correction, you're with, okay. All right. Motion in second with the correct amount of $2,415,000. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back up to item 7A, discuss and consider building inspector contract and ordinance revisions regarding annual building inspector report. Again, this was tabled at the May 21st meeting. So the first thing, we'll need a motion to take it off the table.
Motion to take it off the table?
Second?
Second.
Motion in second to take item 7A off the table. Okay. We have the copy in our packet. I think, I love you talked about it. I think he's made all the revisions. Talk about it and adjust them.
Great. The, the contract, sorry. Contract was first presented on May 7th, and then last time, there was a change to one of the exhibits, and we wanted to have the board be able to consider the entire contract in a final form. We, I had a chance with Lisa to talk with Mr. Beacon in terms of the Exhibit 8A1, which was some additional charges. And we've got some, put in some language to make it a little more flexible. So at this point, we have completed the, the contract, and unless there are any revisions by the board, we'd be in a position to, for you to pass it. And Mr. Beacon has indicated that he would sign it.
Any comments, questions on what we have in front of us?
I just had a couple of questions. For, I guess, section one of the contract under reports, number three. It says, "In coordination with the village clerk and village attorney, answer or respond to requests from open records made pursuant to the Wisconsin statutes." So I'm just wondering if we can put in there, answer, respond to requests in the timely manner from open records made pursuant to Wisconsin statutes. Because I know Wisconsin statutes has like, like a timeframe of when you're supposed to respond. But when I read that, it kind of seems to me like we can answer and respond to requests that we make whenever we want.
Well, sure. I mean, I can, I can change the language. I mean, the, what, what we do at, in the village is that when a, open records request comes in, it starts with Lisa. And then if there are legal issues involved, then I get involved. Otherwise, Lisa takes care of it. And everyone that we, that we have working for us seems to, I mean, we really haven't had a problem with them not getting back to us. But if there's a comfort level with some additional language, I'm happy to put that in.
Oh, I just thought that previously there, we had some issues with Tom getting back to us. But Tom?
No, no. It was more along the lines of what the person was asking for. I mean, they had been given the materials. And then it's like, there was this request for additional materials and when finally we were able to kind of the bottom of it, it turned out we had already provided everything.
Okay. So there was some miscommunication?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, so at the end of the termination of agreement, we're, with the 90 days written notice to the other party. So are we, like, once this is signed, is it just in effect forever or does it, like, it's...
No, this is, this will be, we haven't put a specific term in here. We, I kind of brought that up in terms of if the board was comfortable with that. But what hap, I mean, the plan will be that each year, when Tom makes his report to the board, I mean, that, and also during the year, if there are questions, then the board can certainly ask whether, ask him those questions, and they can make a determination if they want to continue or not continue. But the assumption would be that, assuming that he's doing everything according to what's in the contract, that the contract would keep renewing itself.
Okay. Oh, well, I guess I had one more question. Just because Lisa went through the, the process with me today. So to get a building permit, someone comes in, they fill out the form, and then Lisa gives the form to Tom, and Tom gives her, goes through it, gives her the permit, and says how much the fees are going to be. And then Lisa tells the person how much the fees are, they pay, and then they get the permit. So then Tom goes to the house and inspects it and leaves, leaves one of the three sheets there. He keeps the sheet and will get a sheet. So then, I'm just wondering if there's minor corrections noted. Then what? The, how do we find out?
Usually if he requires some kind of corrections, the contractor has to do the corrections and then have Tom come back and re-inspect. That's usually how that works, yeah.
Right. And then how do we know that? Like, just as far as, because we don't have paperwork for that.
Well, I guess, I'll put it this way, he, they're not going to get the final permit unless he goes back and inspects and if they, unless they do the work. And so that's kind of the idea there. If you could just hold that up. In one of the open records requests we got, there was this statement that, well, he just puts sticky notes, and I'm envisioning this kind of sticky notes that I have in my office. Well, then we act, then Matt and I actually got trained in what kind of, what they have there, they're kind of an all-weather type of thing, so.
These don't even have sticky on it.
They staple it on.
Yeah.
Same thing that Matt is supposed to.
And then what, you know, at the end of the building process, they get a certificate of occupancy. And if they don't make the corrections that Tom asked them to make, they're not going to get the certificate of occupancy. So that's kind of the checks and balances for that. So they have to document that these corrections or whatever were done, or they're not going to get the final thing where people come in.
And assuming that the people have a competent attorney, which I certainly always recommend, then without an occupancy permit, I mean, I've had closings that I've helped out because I've just said, well, you know, if we don't have an occupancy permit, we're not, we're not closing. So that is kind of the ultimate hammer that you have to make sure that all those things are taken care of.
Okay. Well, that concerns me a little because the one that I saw today said that, that thing had to be fixed, but it was okay. So...
I mean, it was a certificate of occupancy, okay. Okay. I mean, we can have a system where he's got a document, repairs are done, or corrections are done, I guess, before they get to that stage.
Do you know what, what the issue was that needed to be fixed?
Guardrails on the deck. It's not big.
I feel I've heard him discuss this before, and what he's required is that the patio door is sealed shut somehow, where they can't use the deck, but they can, he didn't stop them from, you know, occupying the house.
Yeah, the deck does affect the living in the house, I get that. It's just, my one concern though is that if corrections need to be made, that I'd like to be sure that we can verify that they were resolved.
We'd be happy to ask Tom, again, to come, you know, he could come in and, you know, this can be addressed directly to him.
Sure. I mean, it's just, since we have this nice sheet of paperwork now that we'll get in the file, I'm wondering, is there, like, can he do another one of these?
Yeah, he could just give us another one and see if the corrections completed.
Yeah, like that.
Yeah. I think it would be helpful to have that discussion with him. So if he has an issue with that, he can say, this is why I have an issue. Because, you know, to me, it sounds like, yeah, that's great, but he might, if I went and told him that, you know, tomorrow, he might be like, oh, jeez. So probably best to ask him to come in to talk about some of these miscellaneous things.
But I mean, as far as the contract itself goes, I'm with that. I mean, this is more of our internal...
Kind of administrative, yeah. I mean, Tom has fairly patiently taught Matt and I all sorts of things about building inspections, so.
I'm fine with incorporating those expectations into conversation. I don't think they're unreasonable at all. Any other questions on the contract? All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Okay. I'll second?
Second.
Motion in second to approve the contract with building inspector and ordinance revisions regarding the annual building inspection.
Those are, those are not included in here. I wanted to make sure that we got the contract done first. And I'll bring back the ordinance revisions to reflect what's in here.
Okay. So we'll put the ordinance revision part on a future agenda item. Okay. So just a building inspector contract, and then with the expectations that Melissa mentioned about regarding corrections being documented.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Motion passed. Item B, discuss first draft of the village board's list of priorities. This item was also tabled, so we'll need a motion to take that off the table. Take it off the table. Okay? You have second?
Second.
Motion in second to take that off the table. It's on the table. Any other? Okay. All right. Print is kind of fine. I had to zoom in on it there, but... Yeah.
So this is, this is just put together as verbatim what was, what was sent. So, you know, we can, we would get this in another format, but just for, you know, for tonight, for everyone to see what's been submitted so far. If we wanted to, you know, have more time to get some others filled in there, or however you'd like to proceed.
I don't have to get mine in yet. I was basically going to give one paragraph. I guess if you want to break it apart into those pieces, that's fine.
Would it be helpful to have kind of a working committee, not working, a working meeting where we go through these, prioritize and perhaps discuss them first of all, prioritize them?
Right. In a next board meeting or future board meeting, just kind of devote some time to doing that or meet a separate, 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 I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think, again, cut a, carve up time to actually dive into these, you know, because they're meaty.
There's a lot of detail in there already at this point.
Is there, for, you said you were retired. Jim, were you still thinking about, or were you just going off of what we had all already put on there?
Yeah. I was on vacation last week and just didn't get a chance to, before I left for vacation. I was gone for nine days.
That's right. You aren't all sunburned?
No. No. Lots of sun blocking.
Yeah. I mean, I can get mine in the next week and we'll go from there, I guess, if that works for you.
It works, yeah.
Okay. And then I agree with John, maybe just kind of devote some time to still working on this because it's kind of, obviously, everybody's got some different priorities and we have to look for commonalities and things that aren't common.
Even based on the list, it seems like there are some commonalities.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Is there a date or something? Were you thinking, John, it sounds like maybe, maybe it would be best to do it separate of a board meeting?
I just, yeah, I think that would be more beneficial, just to have that as a total focus.
Like ahead of a board meeting or on a different date or just...
Yeah, maybe pick another, another Monday, other than the first, third, and first, second, third, should be the fourth.
Right.
That would be June 25th.
Might be the 25th?
I don't know if there's any other...
Lisa would be the best for that. I think there's a weapon, not that I know of.
It's fire.
It's usually, the last week of the month is usually pretty light, so. So I think in addition to a spreadsheet, I have another list that you kind of saw the start of in the last packet that, that showed the items that had similarities right next to each other. So, you know, when it really came, but it would help to have the, you know, the group come together and kind of decide how to make that one whole item. Because sometimes there are a little bit of differences and, yeah.
Okay. I'm fine with the 25th. If that works for everybody else.
I'm getting into the calendar, so I'll have to double check, but I think that should work.
Okay. At the same time, I think since 30...
Earlier would be better.
Yeah. Yeah, an hour and a half earlier. Whatever everybody else wants. 6:30 works, otherwise we can do the 5:30?
Oh, I won't be here, I'll be in Rice late Monday, Tuesday, for a convention.
Okay, everybody else can be able to do 25? Okay.
I can follow up with you afterwards.
Yeah.
And then, I think after that meeting, then, I'd be comfortable to, you know, allocate whatever, whatever you guys discuss as far as points or however you want to do it. And then, you know, we can finalize it at a future board meeting where we wouldn't take up as much time.
Everybody okay with 5:30?
So we'll have another chance.
5:30 and 25th?
Certainly, yeah.
Yeah.
5:30, okay, all right. 5:30. Okay.
Jack, before you move on to the next item, just suggestions to the board, maybe if you want, would want to skip to Deer Grove VMS report, Chief is here.
Yeah, I was thinking that you might wanna get going.
Especially since it's so low on.
He looks like he's having fun.
Yeah. Taking all kinds of.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome Charlie.
Anyway, yeah, item 9, Deer Grove VMS Commission Chief, if you want to come up here and talk to us about the.
Stand.
That's fine.
Try and jump over the town and I chew and do the same spiel, so.
Okay.
Try and make it brief and to the point for everybody. Little bit of history on the topic, so since I started in January, our members have been reporting some of their issues with our cardiac monitors. Either some irregularities in some of their blood pressure monitoring, either their SpO2, et cetera. Over the last couple months, it's been worsening. We did have them PM'd by the company, which of course, when they did their calibrations, everything came back fantastic, just like taking your car to the mechanic with a sweep, they go, oh, can't find it. We attempted to write grants to look for new ones, none of those have been successful at this point. We've got to the point now where they're, they're unreliable in our patient care. They, most recently, as an example, we had busy evening, some period was in the village for a call. Our unit was just a couple minutes behind them, so they wound up transporting the patient, but some period of their initial assessment of a chest pain patient, their monitor did show that it wasn't active heart attack that was occurring. When they transferred care to us, we reran our 12b DKG and it did not show heart attack. Followed care with the patient at the hospital, showed it definitely wasn't a heart attack, and they went to the cath lab fairly shortly after they were admitted. We've had a number of occurrences like that. We've had patients that were up and breathing and talking, just like all of us are here, showing asystole on our monitor, no heartbeat, flat white. We've had them in shock over those, things that you attach your AED to and go shock advised, which then, again, aren't very compatible with life, or they were very much alive. So they become unreliable, so we've started looking into replacements options for them. Through work with the commission, there are two companies remaining. The current company that we are using, basically a couple years ago, said we're not making monitors anymore, and then I think it's three more years, they're gonna stop supporting all the ones that are out there anyways. So they difficulty come by, there's no replacements, parts are hard to get, it is. So we looked at the two remaining companies, they basically came out comparable price-wise, the ones that we opted for, which was the Zoll X Series. Basically one because it's lighter by a couple pounds, prices were similar, the features were similar. Unfortunately, next to the ambulances, it's the single most expensive, the expensive piece of equipment that we carry. Our quote roughly came out to, total, we're looking at replacing the three monitors that we have, so we have one in each of our primary ambulances, the one here in Contra, one in Deerfield as well, so we have a cardiac monitor on our Car 79, which is parked outside, is a first response vehicle, so we're looking at replacing three grand total, ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-six, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. We have been able to work out a lot of the funding for that, utilizing the Tom and Deerfield contract money that's coming in, as well as we did have some stores in what's called FAP funding for current purchases at the state funding opportunity. Although we can participate in it because we still have some EMT members to our department, and we've been bank borrowing some of that money. We also had a generous donation from the Houston family that'll go towards the purchase of the monitors. Zoll's also been able to work with us on a payment plan for them, so basically the way it's gonna work, net 30 days from the day of purchase, we owe them twenty-eight thousand dollars, which will be in combination with what we have already in the FAP funds and the Tom and Deerfield contract money. January 31st, the next year, we owe another twenty-five thousand dollars, that's the money that we have from the Houston family. Then April 30th, we owe sixteen thousand five hundred, that's half of what we're getting from the Tom and Deerfield, then again, in the fall, we have the other half coming in that we'll use for that. So the only money that the municipalities will see is the balance, and that won't be due until the end of March in 2020. So you have some time to plan for it. The remaining balance is eleven thousand, six thirty-six, fifty. So in conjunction with our IGA contracts, you know, entering into a contract, purchase contract of this large, we need the approval of our boards. So here we are, just to make sure we can get your approval to purchase the monitors. It's kind of like one of those necessity things that if those eventually break and don't work, our ambulances can't turn a wheel to run a service. Happy to answer any questions that you had about them?
I use the things too on the ambulance same brand and we've had similar issues. It's not just Deer Grove, I mean, it's like, okay, you're not gonna support this anymore, the batteries don't hold a charge sometimes, I mean, it's, monitor's supposed to charge the battery when it's plugged in, it doesn't always do that, so if you couldn't use power, I mean, that's not something you want to happen.
Chief, is there, do you have any kind of plan that says, well, okay, monitors last X number of years? And, and, you know, just kind of anticipating these costs because they always seem to come up? And, you know, it's like after budget time, and, I mean, that just may be an impression that you get, but, you know, just, is there a, a plan to replace these things or a plan to set aside money so that that's kind of anticipated?
Certainly, and I haven't been here for the last, you know.
No, I, yeah.
There was discussion at our last commission meeting that, you know, they had, had tried to put capital replacement plans in place before that they had worked out so well. At this point, we are developing a new one that will present at the commission meeting end of this month, on the 21st, so. Yeah, there is definitely, you know, for these big capital purchases, there's a low life expectancy, and you can look to get eight, nine years out of an ambulance. Five to seven years typically is life expectancy on a cardiac monitor, ours are nine to 10, so they're a little bit past their prime. To live in the car in a couple of years will need to be replaced, so, yes.
Well, I mean, I'm all, all in favor of having good cardiac monitors, but, and, and so, I mean, I was just wondering if, if from your perspective, if that's something that you're looking into to say, let's set up a capital replacement plan and make sure.
And that would, that would be the ideal, just so, yeah, so everybody can look out into the future to say, you know, in five years, we're gonna need to look at replacing the car, in seven years, the monitor's gonna be done, so, but, yeah, that budgeting plan, I can be number eight out for everybody.
Is there any way to get the monitors on like a rotational replacement? I know if you have to buy three at once, you gotta buy three at once, but I don't know how you track how much this one's used, is it wearing out more than this one, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and it'll be, you know, certainly all of them are kind of failing at the same rate at the moment. We can see as, it's a pretty equal split between MedX78 and MedX80, as the card number of pills and usage goes, so, probably one of the cars used the least, so that one can probably, will probably be able to last longer, rotate in in the future for another. Here, so yeah, we can stagger them out as well.
I think getting a payment plan from Zoll is probably a pretty good thing.
Yeah, and actually, it doesn't touch into the municipalities for another two years, it won't be your July 2020 budget. For reference, and again, will, will probably depend on equalized value, and, you know, at that point, if it were today, Village's contribution would be six thousand, fifty dollars and ninety-eight cents.
One question, is it a sole provider? Do you collect bits from other companies or is this like the recommended?
Yeah, so there's really, there's two current manufacturers out there. Our current manufacturer, Phillips, promises in three to five years, we'll have another one out, while these definitely won't last that long. So Zoll and Physio are the two companies out there. We did demo both the X Series from Zoll, it's both the life pack from Physio. Comparable price, comparable equipment, really came down to the life packs of boat anchor, need to haul it up a bunch of flights of stairs.
Any other comments, questions?
No.
I think that's a reasonable way to do it, is go about a plan that he's got to replace and then, it's not something you want to be stuck without.
No. It's kind of the perfect start.
And all but the last payment, they've already got figured out how to pay for it himself, which, not costing anything out of taxpayer funds at this point, except in the last year.
Are the other municipalities planning on voting on this tonight, or is that?
I have to go over the town after I've been here.
Okay.
And then, those are Deerfield meets next week.
Okay, I mean, I just, I know it's not on here to discuss and consider, but, I mean, any item is subject to action too, I mean, if we're good with it, I don't know whether we need to make them come back again.
No. I, at this point, based on all I've heard from when I was on the commission and everything, I would sit and we would, we would move ahead. It's all a motion at this point.
Okay.
To approve.
Okay.
And position of the three monitors.
All right, you have second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second to approve the purchase of the three monitors with the plan that Chief Macha outlined. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? There you go, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Pardon you, I was.
Yeah. To make sure I didn't miss anything here, I guess we're at 8B, is this moving? Okay. 8B, discuss and consider ordinance 04-2018, ordinance correcting Parkside Ridge annexation.
Yeah, so as we've gone through the planning process, the surveyor with the applicant's engineer and the surveyor at MSA have been digging through the historical legal descriptions of the parcels involved. And basically, the parcels are described as extending to the center line of Viola's Road, and the language that talks about conveying them to the public is, is this kind of very old-fashioned terminology, and it's not really the equivalent of formally dedicating the right of way to the public. So what this ordinance proposes to do is simply add that section of right of way, which would then in turn be formally dedicated to the public on the final plan. Which just kind of clears up the historical confusion.
Sure.
We talked to the State Department of Administration, they have a department that specializes on municipal boundaries, and their guys said things like this are fairly common, and they provided some examples of ordinances on how to fix that, so the one that we have here is based on that.
Any questions for Aaron?
Is there any concern from your perspective?
No, Aaron and I talked about this, and I think that, and so, we agreed to talk to the state.
So going forward for other developments or whatever, we'll know what language you have in there and.
Yeah, I mean, it may vary depending on how old the parcel description is, but it's something.
Okay. All right, okay, I'll move approval of ordinance 04-2018 correcting the Parkside Ridge annexation. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. 8C, discuss and consider liquor license applications for licensing year July 2018 to June 2019 for the attached list. I got it here someplace. Any issues with any of these people, Chief?
Nope.
Okay.
I move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the liquor license applications for licensing year July 2018 to June 2019.
I just had a question.
Yep.
What's the difference between Class A and Class B?
And Class A can sell anything, and Class B is, is that wine and beer?
No. Class A is like your liquor store grocery stores, Class B is like a bar tavern pub type situation.
Exaltant versus sound.
Pretty much.
Full set.
Pretty much. All right, motion and a second then, any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Discuss and consider amusement device permit application for licensing year July 2018 to June 2019 for the attached list. Any questions on these?
Yeah, what's an amusement device?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
A game of chance.
Put in a quarter and pinball or whatever, I don't know.
There's only like three?
Yeah.
Should be more.
Little amusements, we keep it down.
Right. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second to approve the list for July 2018 to June 2019 for amusement devices. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. And item E, discuss and consider cigarette license applications for licensing year July 2018 to June 2019. Any questions on these?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second. Motion and second to approve. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. All right, discuss and consider operators licenses for renewal year June, July 2018 to June 2019 for the attached list of individuals, I'm trying to get to that document here, I think I got it up. Any issues with these?
Motion. I'm sorry.
No, I just, I just wanted to ask the chief just in case something came up in between then and now. Okay, if there's no issues, I'll make a motion to approve the operator license applications. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve operators licenses for July 2018 to June 2019 for the attached list. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We're now down to nine. Reports from village boards, commissions, and committees. The first one is Joint Review Board, I was not able to be there. I think, I'm trying to get the, come up here. Somebody else on that one?
You were there today.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking of Board of Review, sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, Joint Review Board, yeah, we did that. All I guess I'll let Matt talk about it, basically was going over district's.
Yeah, so the representatives from other tax jurisdictions met in organizational meeting, they appointed, like, or accepted Don Brinkmeyer as the public member. We went through the three TID project plans.
Yep.
And then, following that meeting, the CDA, which we'll get to next, had a public hearing on the three project, TID project plans.
Right, part of that dealt with the fact we're trying to create some new TID overlays and things like that, I guess you have to have a public member of each TID district and.
Yeah, and, and they're actually, the Joint Review Board will actually be the entity that makes the final determination on the TIDS.
Right.
Scheduled that for July 11th?
Right. Okay, Community Development Authority.
Okay, so we met on Monday, May 22nd, actually, right after the Joint Review Board met. Held public hearings for each of the proposed TIDS 8, 9, and 10. 8 again is down by the CVS, both sides of the street there on Carter Road. 9 is an overlay of the one out here across from the hall, and 10 is out beyond the circle, many circles by the interstate north of that. Public hearings were open and closed, there were no questions or issues. We resolved then, as the Community Development Authority, to approve each of the TIDS, as well as the creation of project plans respectively for each of those TIDS. And that's what CDA did.
John, a couple things, if you'll, don't mind me adding.
No. You were there.
There was some discussion about potentially recommending to close TID 6 after TID 9 is created, there's really much, not much use left to that already.
The deficit for TID six is already being picked up by the tax levy, so there really is not much reason to keep that out there. And then, the CDA also showed interest in being the entity that would, that would look at evaluating any development proposals, incentives, and pass along a recommendation to the board.
Can't, I'm sorry, TID six, that's the one that of course we've got a deficit with. I know where the levy's paying for it, but I thought we would be able, I thought we had talked about that in the past of extending it three years, using that M A T C.
That was, well, the new TID nine will encompass most of that area, so all that new increment will be essentially extended twenty years through TID nine, but it won't be encumbered by that, the debt that was tied to TID six anymore.
It won't be encumbered by it, what happens to that? Just goes onto the levy forever, or for the duration of, until we pay off that intersection?
Yeah.
Wouldn't it, I don't know, why, why would we want to do that? Why not try to get something and pay that down and get that one back in the black?
Because the TIDS, the TIDS are going to expire.
In how many, it's three years plus three years, right?
Well, you have to, you have to apply for that extension.
Right.
You have to have something being developed to apply for that extension.
Well, we, I mean, we're hoping to get something, right?
Well, that's why, but you're, there's not an incentive there to bring somebody in to take out the hill and everything else, only as it stands now, even with an extension, is the problem.
And the, and the extension discussion was with the developer who was making a proposal, so that was where, where that first came up, and that was being discussed as the, if that had gone forward, then there was an incentive to try and get that extension.
Maybe ten years ago.
We could never pay that back. I mean, that's just, that's just lost funds that we've sunk into the intersection and so.
Well, I mean.
Goes against levy, right?
Yeah. I mean, if, that, that's always the, anytime the village takes out debt, even if it's tied to a TID, it's general obligation, meaning that you can, you can pledge funds towards it, but if those funds can't pay for it, it comes back to the tax levy.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's why it's also important, you know, when the board made that decision to, you know, they wanted to do the project to, to do it because they think it's best for the village, not just because they think that, you know, the.
It's free money.
Potential development could pay for it.
Right.
So. Yeah.
Okay. And, I mean, I, the bank is paying a little something toward that. What, what happens to the future revenue that that, that's all just kind of what written off and lost, or?
No, it's not lost. All the taxing jurisdictions will be able to tax out off that, that new tax base.
All of them, not just us.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, you've run the numbers both ways, this is the best way to do it, I guess.
Yeah.
Probably the only way to get development there.
Yeah, we want to get, we want it to develop, and we want to throw some good incentives. And you're just saying six years or whatever is too short of a time span?
Yeah. It's certainly, it's certainly too short of a time span to not just get the development, but to provide any incentive that would be meaningful and pay off the debt. So. That was a key part of the negotiations that were going on with the, with that developer, I mean, we were trying to explain that, you know, time is just too short.
Yeah.
And we can ask.
They want it too much, yeah.
And Greg can speak to even more specifics than John and I are mentioning, but, I mean, this will be a decision that comes back to the board, it'll probably be discussed during the financial.
Yeah, that's what I'm bringing up now, rather than.
Right. Yep.
All right.
Thank you. Law enforcement committee.
Uh, let's see, we met, uh, last, uh, I think it was last Thursday. Talked about the verbiage for some signage behind the building here, and I'm sorry, Chief, I don't have the exact verbiage.
We, we went with what the board recommended, right?
Yeah.
We just discussed that, so that brought the committee up to date.
And then we also discussed, uh, the information that was given to us by the town and their police department. And there are some, I'd call this indiscrepancies between what they presented and the information we got from Dane County. And, uh, leaving at that, I guess.
Yeah, they didn't include the, the other side of the reciprocal policy.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the memo from Chief Labor trying to explain that other side of the coin.
Yeah.
Works both, please.
The chief's report.
Police report, uh, there's no spikes in any sort of activities, and, um, oh, there's none?
Okay.
Report.
All right, Parks, Rec, and Forests.
Yeah, we, um, had an interesting meeting, we had a lot, a lot on the agenda. Talked about the fireman's park playground equipment that is budgeted, that, um, Sean did an RFP, got back, um, bids, multiple bids from three companies that, so we had like, what, have half dozen options, more and more. And we, we kind of narrowed those down to three that we're going to put up on the website to get public input, four, okay, four, I'm sorry.
No, we're input on poll.
Yeah, okay. And we're going to have people vote on them, I mean, they're all, all three of them are great options. We got a lot, a lot of lively discussion back and forth on, on how to, or what priorities we wanted for the playground, but it's going to look great. You know, it's, it's, uh, so that's, that's kind of exciting for Fireman's Park. And then, um, let's see, we discussed El Margot Park and ba, and basically came to the conclusion that town's on their own on that park. We don't have any residents right around it. We, we annexed the land, but there are no houses there. So, you know, the town is interested in us participating in that park, and so we're kind of recommending to the board that we do nothing with their request. So, um, as the Parks Commission, that's what we've decided.
Would that change if our, if we actually have development around it then?
Well, they wanted the, us to share in that cost of spending fifteen thousand dollars now.
Ah, okay.
So, we're going to take a hard pass on that, is our recommendation.
Unless the partner putting the old play down the grid, right?
Well, yeah. We don't know what they're putting up, but, um, they're fifteen, we know what, we know what sixty thousand buys, so they're putting fifteen thousand on that playground, so. Yeah, so that, that's that. Then we discussed the Baccam Park splash pad and shelter, and, um, you know, we've got some preliminary stuff on that. And Sean is in the process of putting together a committee that will, uh, try to get, uh, community involvement to get, um, input on that and see the direction of that. Sean, if you want to comment further on that?
Sean, maybe you said, maybe you said.
Sure.
I, I wouldn't say, it's just semantics, but I, I wouldn't say a committee, just because it's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's inform, no, that's okay, it's just informal, it's, it's just a group of residents that he's talking to to get feedback.
Yeah, what is it called then? Just a group of residents?
Yeah, we have a group of about ten people that are interested that will help kind of steer us and decide whether we want to theme the splash pad, or whether we want to just put in general pieces. But it was just a decision that I didn't want to make on my own. Um, so we have, like, as I mentioned, about ten people that are interested in doing that, so we're looking to meet here in the next few weeks.
Great.
Have we examined other spots, other parks to put the splash pad? And the reason I ask that, because you have a railroad track and defined barrier there to get to Baccam Park. Baccam Park will have eventually development around it, with park ridge some, but nothing of substance. Is that the best spot to even?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, is Baccam Park a destination, is that going to be a destination park? It's big, um, it's going to have lots of fields eventually, or do we want to, yeah, do we want to put it in a different park? What, what, what are your thoughts?
My other thing, well, my thought is.
Community park.
Probably not the best spot to put it in, because you don't, splash parks usually are for generally little kids.
Yeah.
And you have a park that's away from the center of the heart of the village, is it better to put it in a different park?
Well, it is, it is, it is a drive to park, absolutely, yeah.
And that's, that's, I don't think, a good vision for a splash pad.
Well, I mean, they kind of, they put the playground equipment, the kind of the dream park thing there, you know what I'm talking about, yeah?
Yeah, I helped build it.
Double down, oh, yeah. So, I mean, I guess that's, it's kind of in conjunction with that, sort of.
Okay.
But I, but I'm open to, we're open to suggestions, what do you think? I mean.
I'm just saying that you'd want it in a park that is surrounded by homes. Where families with young kids can cart them over there in their strollers and enjoy, they're wet, they don't have to get back in a car.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would concur that there aren't many families that are going to be able to walk to that park to go to the splash park.
No, no.
Uh, and I think that might limit the usage that we would have with that, because it is a, as you put it, a drive to park, drive to, you know.
So to stay in great shape, it'll be pristine.
Well, it, it'll never wear out, yeah.
Yeah, you want, I mean, you're going to put something in there, it's expensive if you want it.
No, I know, it's, it's not, they're not cheap, so, um, and that's, I guess, we'll give that input to the committee, not committee, the group of residents. That will, um, because, you know, we can take that under advisement. I guess, um, the shelter kind of goes along with that too, I mean, the, the, I don't know if you can discuss the, the purpose of the shelter, you know?
Overall, the, 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 the concept of the park was always set to be a destination park. Uh, we do have a lot of people that show up there on a daily basis, there's ten, fifteen cars there pretty much all summer long. So, when our Parks and Rec Committee back in, I want to say fourteen or fifteen, put that together, that was one of the features that they wanted to do that. I don't disagree with what you're saying at all, um, I think that our current parts, park situation, uh, splash pads can be as small as you want them, one or two features, or as large as we want them. Um, so my thought on that would be as we're developing and going into Hamburg's area or some of the additional parks that are coming in, maybe we want to look at doing, you know, smaller ones in that direction as well. The, uh, the shelter that's coming in, that by far, uh, we're looking down the road to program that park more. So, having some restrooms there and servicing those customers that are there with, you know, with their little kids, with something other than a porta potty, it just kind of all flows together.
That wasn't my question at all, I was questioning just the splash pad location.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it, it is adjacent to the bike path, it's also adjacent to the rugby fields, I mean, they're, they're, it is a destination kind of thing.
Yeah, I'm just saying that maybe not necessarily.
Not walking to, yeah, yeah. They, young families cannot easily take the stroller and walk there, it's true.
And, and it will be a question that I bring up, because most of the people that are in the group do have young families. So it becomes more of, you know, do you agree with this location, and then we would come back to Parks and Rec and say.
Yeah.
You know, overwhelmingly, or whatever, the, the folks would rather see it in a different location.
Probably no matter what park we put it at, I would, I would argue that probably three forest or more of the residents aren't going to use strollers to get there, no matter where you put it, but.
No, but.
Yeah. But at least we could capture more, I agree. So we'll have to, we'll have to task the residents to figure that out.
Sure.
And, let's see, do we have anything else? I'll let you talk about the bike path. That's it?
John talked about the bike path.
All right.
Yeah, we can drop ahead to the bike path, as long as you're up there, Sean.
Yeah.
That's done.
I missed that meeting, I was gone that week, yeah.
Do you want to talk about the bike path?
I mean, we could if.
No, he's already back now.
We can go, we'll just go and order it then, that's fine.
All right.
Sorry. Uh, next item is board of review, that's the one I was not able to make, so I'll let somebody else talk, I had that mixed up with joint board of review.
Board of review met on, uh, May twenty ninth, um, we had three of the five members in attendance. And we did have one case that we reviewed, and due to them being chamber of commerce members, Paula Sievers and Staines, so we actually had two voting members. It was, in my opinion, a pretty straightforward decision, we decided with the assessor for a number of reasons. So, with that being said, Paula is looking to, charity didn't resign, so we'll have another citizen member, so. If there's any other questions.
Just one of the things I've seen in board of review, if somebody's contesting their assessment, they tend to come in with comps for the current year when the board of review is being held. And the assessor said, well, that's fine, but you need to get comps from last year from when the taxes were assessed, does that make sense? You have to have a year older comps, or it's hard to put apples to apples?
They had, uh, so the assessor had an assessed value, um, it was the Houston brothers that came in, and, um, they actually during open books presented a lore figure, which the assessor generously accepted, and then board of view came way down due to of the sixty units, they only had five occupied as of January first. So they were going off of occupancy rate versus the actual building.
Okay.
But we followed, you know, all of our training, and there wasn't overbearing, there, there wasn't overbearing proof, um, to sway us against what the assessor actually provided us.
Basically, reven, revenue from a business, a building, is not a determination of assessing.
Assessing, assessing, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So Peter Dahl was also a citizen member that wasn't able to attend, and I know Deb did a lot to coordinate the particular dates, so I just encourage, uh, you know, maybe someone reach out to Peter. We will need a replacement for Paula for next year as well.
Okay, so if anybody knows a citizen member that's interested in it, I can look to, thank you. All right, joint fire department committee.
Okay, we met on, uh, May twenty ninth, uh, discussion about considering the repaving of the parking lot for the EMS building. Uh, we've been building up funds for a while, each community's been contributing that on a yearly basis. It's starting to get a little bit tattered to be nice. But we tabled that until we get another consideration for a root bid for two of the bids, because, um, the way they provided, they just said a three and a half inch pore for the entire, or, uh, layment of the asphalt. We wanted to have at least five inches in front of the building, because that's where the main, main traffic of the large, fire trucks actually come in. So we thought that would be appropriate. We also, uh, talked about considering the, uh, each respective staffs for the town and village to help haul the material away. I already approached this with JJ, because I had him in a different meeting, um, something to consider, we can haul right to Houston's place in the recycle at Forest. That it probably, that'll hopefully put a dent into the consideration of the additional, you know, three and a half to five inches. We also talked about the connectivity in the building, it is a, uh, basically very hard to connect that building, it's, uh, wiring from, you know, twenty five or whatever years ago. So, we approved under, within a budget, uh, just over four hundred, I think four hundred and thirty two dollars, to basically figure out where all the wires go and which, where they're connected, because we don't even know that right now.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't assess what needs to be done until then. We also, that would also address the E O C connectivity.
Yeah. Communication issues down in the basement.
Yeah, we're moving one of the routers to be on spot where it'll be more accessible for, you know, E O C.
The wifi doesn't work well at all now.
Yeah, so that's what they're going to do is do that as well. So that's included. The chief's report, they have now thirty four volunteers, uh, on, on staff. They've been very, talked about very busy with the construction on ninety. Apparently, we can, we've got a lot of crashes, and we can see that every night on, on the news unfortunately. So, not only our EMS slash fire, but their surrounding ones too have been very busy in that quarter.
I'm just going back to the paving item, I was thinking you were talking about getting rid of the light poles and putting lighting on the building, would that be done in conjunction?
Same, we do it at the same time.
Yeah, that just makes sense.
Tear it up. Um, and that would save, um, a lot of time in plowing.
Yeah.
And we flip lot that every year with town, so.
Okay.
That would definitely be very helpful for that.
Jeff, I just wanted to confirm, uh, John, John, Jeff are the three, um, members, right?
On the board, yeah.
Okay, I'll send, because I'll send you all of what I sent the chief when he first started, because he didn't really get access to all the contracts that were existing, so.
He sent that to me already.
Okay, so you've already got it, you've got it. Okay. If, if you or anyone else needs it, let me know.
And I'm the alternate.
Yeah, of course, I popped in on.
All right.
Last meeting, because John couldn't make it, so thank you, Alison. It's good to have representation. That was pretty much it, we.
Okay.
The next big thing is to talk about the agreement with the fire, and that's gone through with both lawyers, it's been confronted with. It's just, it's, it's dated, that's the big thing.
All right, ad hoc place fulfillment bike path committee.
Uh, okay, we met on, uh, Wednesday the thirtieth, we had a presentation from Chris James from Dane County Parks, Park and Ri, or Park, Park, excuse me. He just updated on the connectivity from Madison for the bike path to essentially Viola's or County Road. There is a delay because there are two areas within that proposed path that, when they actually went and looked at it, have major problems. One of which is, apparently, the path they thought was going to go on is very steep grade. grade. And the other one is basically it's a pond. So they're working on both of those, but that's going to ultimately delay the county's project probably for at least a year and a half because they've got to look at acquiring land. They're working on something for those two sections. The meantime, they're going to work on part of the path through Madison, I think to Buckeye.
Okay.
So they're going to make progress on that. It is priority for the county, the state, et cetera, so they're going to continue that. But whenever you involve, one of the pieces of property, they can't even get ahold of whoever owns it. So they've kind of, kind of worked through all that. So there's a, those two area, problem areas that have to be addressed. Mike provided an update on TAP and DNR grants. They're both moving along. The, I think the DNR we submitted on the thirtieth before the deadline. TAP is still processing through. We won't know until fall time before we, on either of those. We discussed again and considered the route recommendation. Made that our recommendation through the committee. That was noted. Essentially, it goes, the path comes along the railroad tracks. Outside that, a little bit along Bielsa goes across into Bakken Park along the Park Ridge Development, which is going to have a path there that's part of the development. Through the park shoots over to Little Street, nobody knows about, called Grove Street, which basically splits the park in half and goes winding up the hill where the old water tower was, and then follows in through the park in front of the park, parking lot and where the new equipment's going to be, and then shoots rest of the way down Clark. That way, we don't have to involve any landowners. It's the easiest route. It's the, we discussed it, we walked it. It's probably the route bikers will take either way.
Yeah.
Because they'll see the trailhead if we turn them off to try to, you know, move them, you know, off, off a little bit and maybe through closer to the railroad tracks to get more of a constrained area. They would ignore that, I figured, pretty much. But then we'd also have to deal with landowner landmark, which would probably problematic as well and delay it. So that was the recommendation from the committee. So that was the other big thing of the meeting. We won't meet until fall now until we have input on the grants.
So when you say a year and a half, that puts it out, construction's starting in 2021-ish?
Yeah, somewhere in there. I mean, obviously, you're going to be working on before that to Buckeye, so they're going to be working on a section of it. And that, that's, you know, that's going to continue progressing. And then we're going to still work on addressing the two air problem areas, but it's probably going to end up involving some sort of land acquisition, and that's where they're figuring it's going to delay it.
Yeah.
But Chris James encourages us to continue pushing ahead.
Got to be patient.
All right. Your GOBMS commission, I guess, anything else, I guess, besides what you had about the monitors?
I don't know if you wanted to say anything about.
I, I guess we've got someone that we're going to hire, is that correct?
Oh, yeah. Well, then that's, that's a different discussion. I thought you wanted just the.
I'm not on that. I'm not on that subject.
Okay, yeah, no, I know. I was thinking we had EMS meeting in there, two on top of that.
No, that's okay.
I had two other meetings there. So we did meet on the twenty-ninth for collective bargaining, walked through the union, what the union, what the commission had proposed items, and provided that to them. They're going to take it back to membership and come back to, to the commission on, on those pieces. Their list, our shorter list, and there we go. On the hiring committee, on the thirty-first, we met again. Oh, looks like we were going to try to make an offer to an individual that had a couple of accounting experience as well as experience with the EMS. I haven't heard if that moved forward, but we did recommend that the chief make that offer. So.
Awesome.
If that person accepts, then that'll be out. But it looked very promising. And we had a lot of good candidates, so it's good.
All right. All right, reports from village officers, sorry.
I'd like to thank Matt for his update that you sent on that Friday about some different things regarding the village. It was great information. Love to see that every month if possible.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
James? That was good. Matt and Erin and myself are going to meet with a real estate development company called Sarah Investment Real Estate. We're going to meet tomorrow at three o'clock. I do have a little relationship with them, so I'll be getting Lee's advice if, if we get a project going, which we don't have anything going with them right now, get his advice on whether I need to be accused on that. But, yeah, I'm looking forward to hopefully getting something going with them.
Jeff?
I don't really have anything to report. It's just, I'm anxious to get going on our priorities list thing that we have and actually talk about. Kind of bummed we missed that meeting, so hopefully we'll talk about it the following quarter.
Sure. All right, Melissa?
I'm looking forward to seeing everyone at the Fireman's Festival in a couple of weeks.
All right, John?
Okay, the two items I had and actually did note number one was thanks to Matt for last week's report. That is very useful and helpful, so I appreciate that. The expectations, I just threw this out there because there was, two weeks ago, there was a local business that donated some money, like Music in the Grove, as well as for the EOC for some communication. And for whatever reason, I know Sean had a family emergency, so he couldn't attend, but it just seemed like a local business was donating money and we didn't have anyone there to accept it. I don't know if anyone has thoughts on that.
I was planning on going, had something come up, but we're, I'll even take it a step further. I think it's embarrassing when we have committees where committee members, village boards, committee members and presidents don't show up to the meetings they're supposed to be at. I'm concurrently a hundred percent, someone should have been there. And I'll take the, I'll take the blame on it.
Unless I missed the last, you know, one, we had the last report, but I mean, we had an emergency government in Parks and Rec that I would imagine that both subcommittees or the committees would have reported on it, unless I missed it, you know, at a board meeting.
I did mention it initially on a committee report that.
Yeah, and I apologize if I missed that. But yeah, if there's anyone that needs coverage, just give me two or three days' notice and I can rearrange my schedule and try to make those, but.
John, the other thing is that by putting it on to, on the agenda, the idea is to get that notice out to the public that these things are, are going on. So, you know, if you do have, if you know of an event, make sure that you let staff know, know to get put on the agenda.
Well, actually, given that, you'll notice on eleven C, I just thought putting upcoming community events on every agenda, that would give, you know, board member can bring something up and then we can, as a group, make sure that there's someone that's going to be there over there.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yep. And then, like I mentioned under border review, we had five members assigned and only three showed up and one had abstained, so it could have been kind of hectic or hairy if we would have had a one-one tie for that. But I think, not to point any blame, but, you know, it sounds like we have some solutions in place moving forward for, for communication to cover that. And then the second item I had is, I think it's important that we invite the school board to have some sort of joint meeting with us. I didn't attend the joint fire meeting because it was the last facility advisory committee. You know, it was our ninth or tenth meeting. We've been meeting since the last fall. And what the survey results indicated is the tax threshold of above fifty-seven million dollars. There's some other things that actually go along with that, like the re occurring, the five-year operational referendum that we're completing here, too. So possibly in two years, they'll be asking for us to vote on that again, and then the need to expand the high school anywhere from eight to twelve years based on growth for an additional two hundred and fifty to three hundred students. I think most people get the newspaper, so there were some people talking about, you know, building a high school out here. I think the biggest concern from the meeting that I attended with some citizens here a few weeks back was a longer range, range vision for the schools, not so much these Band-Aids where it's tax threshold. So I think the survey started at eighty-seven million, which was the entire wish list, you know, and they kind of said, all right, you know, fifty-seven million's it. But, you know, in two years, they're going to come back for an operational referendum, probably eight years for an addition to a high school. I think the citizens I've talked to out here in Cottage Grove are looking for a long-range vision. Hit us once hard right now and don't come back for twenty, twenty-five years is kind of what I'm giving.
Yeah.
So at some point, you know, maybe as a board, we invite school board members to address the topic. Just a recommendation.
Do their meetings conflict with ours?
No, they meet Wednesdays, and I'd have to look and see their second and fourth or first and third. We can certainly, so the thirteenth would be the next one, whatever that is.
Okay.
So it'd be the second and fourth Wednesdays of June, and we can certainly go attend those.
Yeah, the second Wednesday is planned commission, but the fourth Wednesday might work. I mean, I'm fine, I agree, I mean, we need to have a dialogue because I agree the high school is probably the better option long-term. I could get it hard, more money, but.
And coupled with the fact that Manona is doing, they're doing some facility studies, too, and right now their safety, public safety building has in dire need of expansion. So there's potential opportunities with Maywood and Winnequa that, you know, just heard different discussions. And, you know, we can certainly attend their meetings or invite them to maybe make a presentation here. And just as a reminder, they do have until the end of August to decide whether they're going to go to referendum or not. But I believe the recommendation coming from the advisory committee is to go ahead. Fifty-seven million's going to get you a new three through five school out here. Majority of the other funds are going to be used to update Winnequa, to include a secure entrance. And then the one thing outside of, you know, maintenance projects is, well, it is a maintenance project, but the track at the high school is, you can't have any sort of WIA competitions there, potentially generate some revenue, but I think everyone knows where the land is at and where the growth is at, so.
Well, the concern is we already owe fifty-seven, four million, I think, presently the school district does, is a big debt, and we're going to add this to it, and then taxes are going to skyrocket.
Correct.
And if we keep running at eight point eight percent like last year's budget, before long, we're, it's not feasible to live here. It'll be, you know, so.
Thank you. All right. John?
I've spoken enough.
All right, I have nothing tonight.
Lee?
Nothing.
Okay, Matt?
The project plans for the TIDS will be an item for future, for the next meeting to be discussed at the board. And there's already developers, as I mentioned to you all, that there's already developers that are taking note of these new TIDS, so, you know, it's, it's looking good from a commercial development standpoint, so.
All right. Erin?
That's what I was going to say. You stole us. Come on!
Ditto.
I didn't know that. Matt kind of looks at our notes.
All right, chief labor, any?
No.
Okay. Sean, anything?
No, thank you.
Mike? All right, thank you. Communications and miscellaneous business, consider approval of vouchers. Any comments, questions on vouchers you have?
Is Computer Magic, are they the group that does our computer repair work or something?
They're our IT consultants.
Yeah. If we have an issue with our stuff, the people we talk to, we try to have to fix it. Okay, anything else on vouchers? Now I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve vouchers as presented. Any other discussions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. All right, correspondence, got nothing official. I'll have to check the mailbox, we don't think I have anything. And the new category that Matt had on there, upcoming community events, anything besides Fireman's Festival that we got?
And don't forget the pancake breakfast on Father's Day.
That's right.
Father's, and that's Sunday.
Sunday morning.
Yeah.
Last day of school is this Thursday.
I know the kids are disappointed, you know.
Yes.
Okay.
Just to be, just another, just to be clear on there, about that item, too, if there is something that, you know, you want staff to attend, I mean, just so the board lets us, lets us know.
Or if you have a better title than the one that we've come up with, but I mean, the idea is to make sure that we don't have that situation that, you know, that occurred and so.
Yeah, from a, from a chamber standpoint, either Erin or I, certainly if we're notified of a ribbon cutting, one of us will be there. Anyone else from the boards will, you know, certainly welcome to attend, too. And then if anyone is aware of a situation where we might have a quorum to let us know so we can post that.
Yeah. Sometimes I've got longer, like when I went to the one at Houston's and like Wisconsin